All right, good evening. I'd like to call the December 19, 2017 Board of Selectments meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. My only chairman's announcement is I'd like the room back to the way it was. I do not like this.
I think you should give it a chance, Mr. Chairman.
I'll have to discuss things with you guys, but I would second that if I could.
You can. You're welcome to. So, I believe we do have someone here for something that is not currently on our agenda. If you'd like to come on, I normally point you over there, but the room's all messed up on me.
Yeah, anyone want to grab a chair, John? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Jewell, and I'm from Jay and Jewell and Associates. And I am coming back to you for, there was some research that you asked me to do in regards to the Old Grammar School and the possibility of some funding for educating of any children that might be attending at that school. So I have done a quick memo here, which I'd like to hand out to you. I know that I might be on a future agenda with Senator Fatman and the state rep. So I won't get into any detail about this memo, but pass this out to say that there is funding under the Smart Growth Cost Program, along with the, under Chapter 40-R and under Chapter 40-S, which is administered by the Department of Revenue. There's these funds in regards to education of children and offsetting it. But it is, as you might guess, it's a state program, so there's some complexity to it. So I'd like to pass out the memo to each one of you and ask, next time I come, I will talk in greater detail. So thank you for your time and pass them along.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have our police chief here?
We do.
I think somebody, somebody came in and vandalized the room and messed the table up.
Yes. We're gonna need an investigation, I think.
Can we get a detective up here?
You don't snuff it out originally. Right now, you know, God knows where it's gonna lead to.
The board has full intentions of pressing charges against the culprit.
And we kinda have a suspect in mind.
We do.
Who's not here? There's a reason why she's not here. All right, so we have the FY 2017 Exit Conference with Melanson Health and Company, PC. Over to you folks.
My name is Jennifer Reddington. I'm the manager on the audit, and this is Frank Byron, the president of the firm. And we are gonna walk through the financial statements tonight. There's no new members, so I'm not gonna go into quite as much detail of the explanation of what's in each fund, so please, if you have any questions as we go through the report, just let me know. So if you can please turn to the first page after the table of contents. So I always like to stop here just because this is the report that you hired us to prepare for you. You have a clean opinion this year again, and that's the best opinion you can receive from an independent audit. We can continue on to page three. And, you know, this is the narrative overview of the results of operations for the year. It attempts to put the numbers of the financial statements into Word and just explains what happened throughout the year. We'll talk about most of this during the presentation, so if you can go to page 12. Page 12 is the first numbers page of the financials.
Eleven.
Oh, sorry, 11. Thank you. And this is on the accrual basis, so the main difference is that it has long-term assets and liabilities. I will point out a couple. If you go about three-quarters of the way down the page, you're gonna see total liabilities and deferred inflows of resources. That's a new heading, deferred inflows. And if you go halfway up the page, you'll see total assets and deferred outflows of resources. The deferred inflows and outflows are new, and those are due to your OPEB obligation, I'm sorry, your pension, and how it's relating. So the valuation said that you were going to come, you know, make an investment back at about 8%. Well, you didn't. And so that you have a deferred outflow of resources, 'cause that's not all expensed in the current year. It'll be amortized and expensed over about the next five years. So those are new headings for you to see. Just above that, total liabilities and deferred inflows, you'll see a subheading of non-current. And within that, that's where your net OPEB obligation and your net pension liability reside. Those are your largest liabilities that are on the books now. Your net OPEB obligation is going to change, starting next year, with the implementation of Gatsby 75. Right now, that is still coming on the books in an incremental basis, and next year, it's going to be the whole liability will come on your books. So we'll end up booking, which, right now, is about 19.5 million. So it'll look more like your pension and have a much larger impact on your financials.
Does it have the risk of giving us a different rating next year when this hits forward?
No, it will happen to all communities, so you're going to be similar to the other communities.
And the rating agencies right now know what that number is. It's in the back of the report, in the footnotes. It's just not in the face of the financial statement, so they're already aware of what the number is. Like Jen said, all communities are gonna be going through the same thing in this upcoming year. So the important thing to know is that next year's financial statements, the liability will be about $10 million or so more than it appears this year. Okay?
Okay. So we can continue on to page 13. This is the fund basis financials, and this is much more how the town tracks its books. The first column is the general fund, but it also does include stabilization. It is very comparable to the prior year. Your numbers, you know, don't change too much. You have a pretty tight budget, so, you know, they don't fluctuate that much from year to year. So if you'll look at the third number up from the bottom, the unassigned fund balance, you know, is arguably the most important number in the financials that, you know, people look at, when the bond rating agencies look at, and that number. And it's also the starting amount for the free cash calculation. So this year, that number is about 10% of your budget, and that's what, you know, right in the range of what the bond rating agencies like to see. They like between, you know, 5% to 10%. And your undesignated in that is 6.8, which, you know, is following also along your financial goals, which is good. Your free cash was also, you know, a good, strong number this year, which we will talk about more as we continue on to page 15. Oops, nope. So on page 17, this is the, you know, budget versus actual and how you did throughout the year. If you look at the far right-hand column, you'll see you had the surplus revenues of 750,000, which was comparable to the prior year. And if you continue down at the bottom, you had turnbacks from departments of 810,000, which was also comparable to the prior year. In the revenues, you did have one-time revenues, so, you know, in that number, you do have to be conscious that, you know, there are one-time revenues in there that won't be repeated in subsequent years. If you look in the middle of the page, the total revenues and other sources, just up from that is the use of free cash, two numbers. You used 949,986. So though, you know, you were able to recoup, if you look all the way over on the right-hand column, last number on the page, 1,56173. So that's what you would be able to recoup this year. You did use 900,000, 950,000. So, you know, you do have a tight budget, so you just wanna make sure that, you know, as you're using money, you wanna be, make sure that you are recouping it throughout the year as well. So we can continue on to page 18, and I'll just give you some numbers. They're not on your actual financial statements. I just have them, which is the free cash numbers that you had for the water sewer, which was 431,000, and the transfer station, which was 279,000. And both of them were comparable to prior years. So you had good free cash certifications in both of those funds as well. And if we continue on to page 21. So page 21, the first column is your private purpose trust. That's your scholarships. The second is, your column is your other post-employment benefits, and this is the third year that you've had this fund. So this is where you're actually funding that large liability that's in the, on the front page, page 11. And then your last column is your performance bonds and other items that are, you're using, you're holding for the use of other individuals. Overall, the audit went very smoothly. You know, everything is always reconciled, and everybody is always, you know, very helpful when we're here. There is no management letter again this year. We did have a few side comments, just mostly to prepare Gene and the other financial team for things that are coming up in the future and just things to be aware of and prepare. You do have the strong financial position with the good free cash certification this year of the 1,568,000, and your fund balance percentages were, you know, right in the range of the 10% that the bond rating agencies like. Do you have anything else to add?
No.
Do you have any questions?
No, that's all.
Yeah, it's all good. Good job, Gene.
Not just me. I would like to thank the departments, as well as the financial departments, for their help in closing the year, untimely, and the reconciliation through the year. It does my job easier. So it is the cooperation of all the departments that helped get a clean audit.
I think we've come to expect clean audits from.
I think we're spoilt.
Yeah.
I'd be surprised if it was anything other.
I think we'd all like to fall out of our chair if we didn't come back with a clean rating.
She does a very good job.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so this brings us to ratify the cardiac monitor purchase recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, at Fall Town Meeting, there was an appropriation approved for use to replace cardiac monitors on both of the town's ambulances. Products we were using were under a significant safety recall. The manufacturer had failed to arrive at a design fix that would be acceptable to the fire department. We engaged in procurement process that complied with the spirit, if not the letter, of the procurement laws, and I say that because there are not many manufacturers of this item. So we injected as much competition into this bid competition as we reasonably could. We did not use an invitation for bids process. We used the request for proposals process because our EMTs wanted to field test and rate these products for their acceptability along a rather complex score sheet, for their ease of use, their durability, you know, the long-term outlook, you know, basically, are we gonna be supplied with enough backup wires and batteries and other things to make these things good products to buy? I'm pleased to say, in my summary that was sent out to you electronically last week, that the monitor units that scored the highest also came in when we opened the envelopes with the prices in the second part of the process. That was the low bid. So frankly, we got the best value for the town. The new cardiac monitors will be the Physio Control Life Pack 15, which scored very well in the field tests. And there were some, three different EMTs, including Lieutenant Worcester, who was the manager of the EMT operation, who took these things out for the better part of two weeks, used them on live patients, and came to this conclusion. So I would ask that you ratify this contract.
So moved.
Second.
You defer to Mike? All right, so it was made by Dave and seconded by Mike. Is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so this is to authorize the Board of Assessors to abate taxes for 104
So you have a very brief explanation in your packets. This is one of these technicalities that we deal with administering town government. There is a tax bill associated with this property that the town recently closed on, so in order to clean up the books, now that the town has taken legal ownership of this property, we need to ask you to get rid of the tax bills so that the books will be cleaned up. There is no longer an outstanding tax bill to Buckeye. They have sold the property to the town.
What was the dollar amount on the taxes?
I wanna say 8,700.
Okay.
She didn't even provide that, did she? I don't know if you, do you need the amount?
No.
I don't know. I don't think it's important.
No, I just was curious.
Since we own the property, you know.
So Rich was gonna be here tonight to brief you on all the details of the transaction. He's a last-minute cancellation due to illness. We closed this week with probably the most confabulated closing in real estate that I've ever participated in, with multiple FedEx packages and UPS packages going back and forth, because neither party could be physically present. All the last readings were taken for water and sewer and all the rest, and all the mess was cleaned up. And the final analysis, after a very small balance was cleaned up, I think the town paid very close to, you know, 399,000. 400 was the original purchase price, and took possession, physical possession of the property this week. So that will be water and sewer. This is a necessary step in finalizing this transaction.
Do I hear a motion from any of you fine gentlemen?
I move that we abate the taxes for 104 Main Street.
I'll second. All right, made by Mike, seconded by Dave. Is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye. 2018 license renewals for Common Vic Class II Entertainment Auto Amusement. That sounds fun. Auto amusement.
Auto amusement.
So did Suzanne leave anything? Like, was there any issues or concerns on renewing any of these licenses?
There was just one email that she sent of a check that came back for lack of funds, and I can't remember what it was for.
Correct. I don't remember which one it was for, but if I recall correctly, tell me if I'm wrong, her suggestion was that we sign the license and hold it and abey it.
Yeah, that's what she said she would do.
Right.
But everything else was an honor.
So would it make sense to, do we have to go item by item, or do we just do a mass?
We can do a mass with.
Motion to approve all of it.
Yeah, that's what we've done in the past.
All right, with the exception of holding one until.
But we can approve that one as well. She's just gonna hold the license until she gets the funds.
Do you wanna put the name? I mean, I can look the email up if it's necessary.
That was your automobile internet sales. That was the one that where the check bounced.
Okay.
Kind of a harsh way of putting it.
There was a funding issue.
There may have been a funding issue.
Fund needed immediate attention.
Yeah.
There was a gap.
Cash flow issue.
All right. So do I hear a motion from any of you fine gentlemen on?
I move that we approve Common Vic Chilla Class II Entertainment Auto Amusement and Pool Table licenses as presented to the board.
Second.
Well played, huh?
I was just gonna say, well said.
So made by, eloquently made by Hal. And seconded by Dave. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Health insurance policy, second reading. Has anything changed since the first reading?
No, Mr. Chairman, nothing has changed.
I am going to pass over Agenda Item Number Six and put that on to a Selectments Meeting in February, based on doing some more research and more fact-finding on that. So that brings us to appointing a board representative for police and fire union negotiations, which I do have a recommendation as the chairman.
I do as well, but I was informed, as a matter of fact, today of a potential conflict, and I wanna discuss it with Mr. Bowen.
Okay.
I hope he'd be, is there a time pressure on this?
Can this get pushed to the next meeting?
Yes, it can. So one of the collective bargaining units has invited the town to the table, and we've exchanged dates.
Okay.
Today, we met and did ground rules, which was simple enough. It's the same set of ground rules that the town has used with the Police Officers Association every time we've negotiated, so we just signed those again. We will not meet again, 'cause I figured you guys would have some discussion, until the 22nd of next month. Excuse me, the 7th, Monday, the 22nd at 10:00 a.m. I was right the first time.
And we meet as a board before that, correct?
Two, three times before.
All right, okay. So you'll have time to meet up with Mr. Bowen on that?
I'll reach out to him. I had meant to mention it to you before the meeting, and it slipped my mind. I just need a quick discussion, five minutes with him, to make sure, and if there is a conflict, I'll obviously notify you and Mr. Chairman, and we'll go from there.
We're gonna have to slap you around over this?
I'm used to that.
All right.
I'm not too concerned.
Any issues with slapping the vice chair around at all?
No, if it's for his own benefit, yes.
This discussion is completely out of control.
I do have an issue with that. Maybe we could discuss it out of light of man's gaze.
All right, so slapping the vice chair around has been moved to another board meeting. So that brings us to the minutes for the November 28, 2017 Regular and Executive Sessions, as well as the December 5, 2017 Board of Selectments Meeting.
And I'm guessing we're gonna retain the minutes for the executive session?
Yes, sir.
So I'll make a motion to approve the November 28 meeting minutes for both the regular meeting and the executive session meeting, retaining the executive session minutes.
I will second.
Made by Mike, seconded by Dave. Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This brings us to December 5.
Got this, Ben.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the December 5 meeting minutes as well.
And I'll second that as well.
Made by Mike and seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This brings us to your report, Mr. Wojcicki.
So, Mr. Chairman, that union negotiation is scheduled, the first meeting would be Monday, the 22nd at 10:00 a.m. You're scheduled to meet twice before then, January 2nd and the 16th. And just so I can be sure, both of those days are the Tuesday following a holiday. So if there's no change to our schedule anticipated, then I'll just plan that those two meetings are still gonna occur as planned.
That's the plan.
Okay. On December 26, Town Hall will be closed. Staff was given the opportunity to take the day off or work the day. They most have opted to take their personal time, benefit time.
Okay.
It left us too short to safely run Town Hall. The number of staff we had, the cash operation, we just decided not to do that. There will still be some of us here, but the doors won't be open to the public that day. Let's ask the public to bear with us. That's just the reality of the holiday season.
What day was that again?
December 26, so that's Tuesday.
Understood.
We won't be open.
Okay. Didn't imagine there'd be anything pressing on the 26th.
It's Boxing Day in Canada, Mr. Chairman.
Eh?
Most of us will be oot and a boot. The day after, it just, it's a strange thing with, because we have Christmas Eve, it's a Sunday, but Monday doesn't qualify as a makeup day, because we would not normally be scheduled to work on a Christmas day. It's one day off out of the usual one-and-a-half-day off, and I just think that's how staff is gonna catch up.
Okay.
The, just to give you a sense of what we've been working on, we're building up to budget message time, and I might have a slightly different approach than been taken in the past. I really kind of focused on budget conversations being a five-year process. We need to have medium-to-long-term perspective when we set this current year's budget. It's an absolutely necessary component of good financial management. You'll see that discussed in the bond rating agency's scorecard, and you'll see it discussed in best practices just about everywhere. So that's the path that I follow. I try to project out both the revenue and the expenditure side to see if we can reasonably foresee stability for the next five years before we set this year's budget. So my comments to department heads will reflect that perspective. As another item, switching gears, as many of you are aware, I've been sitting for procurement class training, which, you know, you can watch wax melt or paint dry, and you can always go to training for procurement. It's a close third place to those two, but it's an essential function of the central purchasing function that's anticipated in the Administrator Act. We haven't necessarily had a bumpless ride in terms of some of the projects that Douglas has engaged in. And the roof project at the primary school and here over at the gym has been an area where I've actually had to really sharpen my pencil and focus. And I'll be reporting back to you in January what we've learned from, A, did we do this correct procedurally? B, did we get the substantively correct answer? And the short answer is no, we didn't. You're always cautioned against trying to get the cheapest design professional you can find, because bad plans and bad drawings usually end up in a messed-up project, which is kind of where we ended up. There is good news in that the town has been interacting through the roofing manufacturer, the installer, the architect, to arrive at a diagnosis of why we have leaks in these two roofs. I think there's better news on the school side, is that a couple of fairly simple problems were identified. They wouldn't be unusual problems. There are some vent stacks on the roof of the primary school that are associated with fans, and the roofing material wraps around that, and it can pull away a little bit. And once you get into the duct work like that, you know, the water will distribute and leak. So that has been resolved, and hopefully that was the problem. The speculation is that's the location of the leak, so that's probably what it is. The gym roof here is a little bit more complicated issue. And, you know, a fair amount of it has to do with some of the shoring up along the seams, along the parapet wall. And that's gonna be an extensive conversation, and Rich Bowen is very much aware of where our thinking is here on the administration side. We're most likely gonna have to pursue a workmanship warranty with the installer. The main factor is unlikely to agree that they're on the hook for debris being left on the flat roof when it was. But I'm speculating out loud about something that will later be a factual dispute, so I'll leave it at that. But it's spent quite a bit of time on my books, because, you know, at the end of the day, we picked the cheapest architect, but we ended up paying architects' fees that were two times what was originally set aside, in order to catch up with all these problems. So it wasn't the right way to go, and as, I'll be working with the Building Facilities Committee going on into the future to kind of share this collective wisdom of the Commonwealth of why these procurement statutes for design work were established to keep price out of the conversation and focus only on track record and the merits of the people that do the design work. Lastly, grant activity. I think I've given you a couple of updates on this. We finalized our grant application for OSHA training for our relevant employees. This was an opportunity identified by Brett McKenna and passed on to us. The application was finalized. We should be hearing, oh. The application was finalized, we should be hearing relatively quickly. And once that training regimen is established over the next year, we'll be bringing everybody who's on a site up to speed with OSHA ten, and those who are supervising will get OSHA thirty, and that will not be at the expense of the town. It'll be, you know, grant-funded. We're hoping, so, we're knocking on wood that we win the grant, but I think we put together a real, a real strong application. So that's pretty much my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Alright, so, any oldness business? So none? Any new business? I did want to ask, was the first couple of weeks ago a neck?
Well, so good.
Excellent. You're not running the ice cream in yet?
Not yet.
Okay, seeing as there's no new business, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.